Good evening. Mike's on, can you hear that? Yeah, there we go. Today is June 28, 2021. The time is 5:30 PM. Our address is 10 West State Street, which happens to be the city council chambers. I am calling the city council meeting to order and give a notice to the public as follows. The mayor and council welcome comment from the public during discussion of any of the items on the agenda. You're required to step to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and limit your time used to present your remarks to three minutes or less so others may be given an opportunity to speak. Speak clearly and direct your comments to the mayor and council and not to any consular specifically. It's at the discretion of the mayor and the council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to order, would those able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Very good, thank you. Let's do the roll call.
Goudy.
Here.
Hoop.
Here.
Isom. Lottie Hoff.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Weren.
Here.
Very good. We have a quorum and we'll skip over item E for another day for years of service and let's see. We also do the mayor, consulate, and administrative comments. Does the city magistrate have any comments tonight?
No, Your Honor.
Any comments from the council members?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Two reminders. Fireworks, Sunday night. I probably lied previously when I said it was going to be the biggest show Marsh Town's ever seen. I was reminded that 1976, the bicentennial year, for those of us that were around, was a pretty big show. So, but for the most of you people, it'll be the biggest show you've ever seen. So, that's Sunday night and the contributions are all going to the fireworks. It will be a $30,000 show, so the show will be four times bigger than what we've routinely had. But other money came in outside of the donations for the fireworks. There's going to be, and Mike's going to have to correct me, I think four, four food trucks.
I believe four food trucks.
Bounce houses, three different municipal band, and two different groups, musical groups. National Guards bring in their climbing wall. It's turned into a pretty big thing when the intent was just to have a great aerial show. So it's going to be a good old-fashioned, big celebration. And speaking of that, things getting back to normal. Marsh Town Community Theater is getting back to normal, even though they're not in the theater because somebody didn't finish a building in time. So, anyway, Pete Grady's going to be doing his one-man show, the Ulysses S. Grant show. So if COVID can't stop, General Grant, then I think things are getting back to normal. So that is July 1st at the Miller Auditorium. And again, there'll be food trucks out there. So a shout-out to the little victories. Things are getting back to normal. So, thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Thank you. If nobody else has any comments, the one I'd like to mention today was, it was posted on social media that once again we had the annual giveaway with the help of the police department. But the person who's giving away the car seats for years and years now has been Al Hoop, who's sitting at the council table tonight. And he does a lot of things behind the scenes quietly. He's one of those people that just does things for other people. That happens to be something he's done every year for a long time, and I'd just like the public to know that. So, thank you, Al. With that said, and nobody else raising a hand to speak, let's call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Before we vote on it, I'd like to remove item number 13 from the consent agenda.
You've got to be faster than that, sorry. We've had the motion in second. You know, what really would help is if you'd email me before the meeting starts. I know we all get this in advance, and so if you know that something's going to be taken off the agenda, that would help speed things along. We'll go ahead and remove item number 13. I assume the motion is still good and the second is still good. If not, say no, King's X. Okay. Motion's still good. Let's vote on that minus number 13.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Very good. That carried. One able, would you read those items minus 13?
Approve minutes for the June 14, 2021, meeting and bill is in the amount of $1,367,067 and 11 cents. Approve liquor license renewal for Friends of the Orpheum Theater at 220 East Main Street. Approve the tree trimmer license for Kerwood Enterprises LLC. Resolution accepting the downtown improvement plan. Resolution amending resolution 2021-144, approving a contract with Dan's Overhead Doors to correct the contract amount to $302,054. Resolution approving a contract for roadway maintenance services at the Iowa Highway 14 from Iowa Ave to Woodland Street between the City of Marshalltown, Iowa and the Iowa Department of Transportation created pursuant to Chapter 28E.12 of the Iowa Code. Resolution approving a contract for roadway maintenance services at the Iowa Veterans Home between the City of Marshalltown, Iowa and the Iowa Department of Transportation created pursuant to Chapter 28E.12 of the Iowa Code. Resolution approving contract change order number three for the Timber Creek Pedestrian Bridge Project, number PRK 18001, a decrease of $3,517.75. Resolution approving engineer's statement of completion and accepting the Boulder Contracting LLC Timber Creek Pedestrian Bridge Reconstruction Project being project number PRK 18001 with a final project cost in the amount of $358,893.5. Resolution approving contract change order number four for the East Merrill Hibbs Boulevard East Extension Project, number ECO 19001, a decrease of $51,077.31. Resolution approving contract change order number one and number two for the Airport Vault Improvements Project, number ARP 19002, a decrease of $8,702.69. Resolution approving contract change order number one for the Airport Hangar Terminal and Site Improvements Project, number ARP 19001, an increase of $8,937.56. Resolution to approve the state recreational trail application for the Iowa River's Edge Trail. Resolution ordering construction of the 2021 Duratio Stream Channel Clearing Project, SMW 21001, setting public hearing on proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated costs, and directing publication of notice to bidders. Resolution approving contract change order number three for the South First Street Parking Lot Storm Water Improvements Project, number PLT 19001, a decrease of $1,060. Resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Salvation Army, Inc., for enforcement of parking restrictions and a perpetual parking easement.
Very good. Thank you. That probably saved us 45 minutes to do that by consent. Let's take up item number 13 as their motion to approve that resolution, 2021-157, approving settlement.
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Second.
Is there a second? Mr. Goudy, thank you. Discussion, let me start with Mr. Thompson because you removed it from the agenda, sir.
I just removed it, Your Honor, so I could vote no. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good. That carried. We get to skip over G motions, there are none, and skip H reports and go to I, which is resolutions. What is our first resolution, please?
Resolution approving city fees.
And a solicit to motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Your Honor, this is just a resolution to approve all the fees that were discussed at the last meeting for increases by all the departments.
Thank you. Any discussion by the consulars? Hearing and seeing none, let's unmute the mics so others may participate.
The lines are unmuted.
Let's go 10 seconds. I don't anticipate much discussion.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Carried, very good. Next resolution, one able.
Resolution pledging $250,000 to the renovation of the Fisher Community Center and Martha Allen Ty Theater.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
This is just bringing forward your direction from a discussion item at the last council meeting.
Thank you. Any consulars wish to speak?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Martin.
I will be speaking with one or more of the supervisors and urging them to either match or substantially contribute to this endeavor. I think it's a beautiful project that demands coordination between the city and the county and firmly support this project.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let's open the mics again, unmute.
The lines are unmuted.
Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Carried, very good. Next resolution, one able.
Resolution pledging $250,000 to the renovation of the Fisher Community Center and Martha Allen Ty Theater.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
This is just bringing forward your direction from a discussion item at the last council meeting.
Thank you. Any consulars wish to speak?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Martin.
I will be speaking with one or more of the supervisors and urging them to either match or substantially contribute to this endeavor. I think it's a beautiful project that demands coordination between the city and the county and firmly support this project.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let's open the mics again, unmute.
The lines are unmuted.
Thank you. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Carried, very good. Next resolution, one able.
Resolution pledging $250,000 to the renovation of the Fisher Community Center and Martha Allen Ty Theater.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
This is just bringing forward your direction from a discussion item at the last council meeting.
Thank you. Any consulars wish to speak?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Martin.
I will be speaking with one or more of the supervisors and urging them to either match or substantially contribute to this endeavor. I think it's a beautiful project that demands coordination between the city and the county and firmly support this project.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let's open the mics again, unmute.
The lines are unmuted.
Thank you. Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Carried, very good. Next resolution, one able.
Resolution pledging $250,000 to the renovation of the Fisher Community Center and Martha Allen Ty Theater.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
This is just bringing forward your direction from a discussion item at the last council meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments by the council before we unmute the mics on this one? Unmute away.
The lines are unmuted.
Very good. Let's call the roll on this one.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Carried, very good. Next resolution, one able.
Resolution pledging $250,000 to the renovation of the Fisher Community Center and Martha Allen Ty Theater.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
This is just bringing forward your direction from a discussion item at the last council meeting.
Thank you. Any consulars wish to speak?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Martin.
I will be speaking with one or more of the supervisors and urging them to either match or substantially contribute to this endeavor. I think it's a beautiful project that demands coordination between the city and the county and firmly support this project.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let's open the mics again, unmute.
The lines are unmuted.
Thank you. Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Carried, very good. Next resolution, one able.
Resolution pledging $250,000 to the renovation of the Fisher Community Center and Martha Allen Ty Theater.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
This is just bringing forward your direction from a discussion item at the last council meeting. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments by the council before we open the mic? Unmute, please.
The lines are unmuted.
Thank you. Very good. Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Thank you. That carried. On to the next resolution.
Resolution authorizing the city to submit a U.S. Department of Transportation rebuilding America infrastructure and sustainability and equity raise grant.
I keep putting pressure on you to read fast, don't I? Sorry about that. I had entertained a motion.
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Thank you. Discussion, Michelle.
Yes, so Michelle Spontheimer, Housing Community Development Director. Yes, it's a mouthful. Agree. This is a grant through the DOT, formerly referred to as the Build Grant, which we applied for last year, now known as the Raise Grant. And so, very similar program as it was previously. They have amended their notice of funding for some of the various aspects of the grant, but essentially remains the same. It is an infrastructure-funded program to support the work that we are proposing on Highway 14. So this is the North Third Avenue and partially South Third at the corridor there, including streetscaping and a lot of other components related to utility, infrastructure, stormwater, the road itself, access from pedestrian ways, sidewalks, things of that nature, lighting, and you name it, the full scope. The estimated project cost in total is about $21 million, $21.5 million is where we're at right now. The grant program allows for applications up to $25 million to be submitted. So we would be submitting for essentially the entire cost of the project. We do anticipate working with the DOT on some funding, and there may be portions that come from sources, but we do anticipate a substantial grant submission to be submitted. The application is due July 12th, so it is coming up here in a couple weeks that it's due. We've been working with Bolton and Mink on preparation for this as we did with the last year's grant award as well. So we've had some discussion, you know, with the DOT about our project and kind of preparing for that based on a follow-up from our last year's award or debriefing from that award cycle and trying to implement all those different components that we can. So entertain any questions, and thankfully we do have Bolton and Mink here as well, and so if you actually have real questions, Greg can take those.
Any questions for Michelle or Bolton and Mink by the council?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Michelle, remind me, when we applied the first time, didn't we spend a lot just to do the application?
It is a significant application prep that requires a lot of engineering work.
I didn't see a cost estimate in here for this reapplicating.
I believe we've already done that, correct?
Yeah, that was approved by the council, I believe, back in April or May.
Okay.
And I believe it was $25,000. Last year was $45,000. This year is cheaper because they had a lot of work that was already done and just need to be updated.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Sure. You can't win the lottery if you don't play, I guess. I don't play, so I'll never win. What other questions do the council have or comments to make? If none, let's unmute the mics again.
The lines are unmuted.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Let's vote.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Carried, very good. That carried. And we get to skip over G motions, there are none, and skip H reports and go to I, which is resolutions. What is our first resolution, please?
Resolution approving city fees.
And a solicit to motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Your Honor, this is just a resolution to approve all the fees that were discussed at the last meeting for increases by all the departments.
Thank you. Any discussion by the consulars?
Tentative resolution setting public hearing providing for an easement agreement from the City of Marshalltown, Iowa to Archwire Rentals, LLP, for an ADA accessible ramp.
Anybody wish to move to approve?
I'll move to approve this, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Thanks. Discussion on this one.
Yeah, this is setting a public hearing on granting of an easement to Archwire Rentals, LLP, for the building, I believe it's at 229 13th Avenue North. Currently, there is a step to get up into that building. They're desiring to build a ramp to basically provide for ADA accessibility into the building. That would require part of the public sidewalk to be able to do so, and so we are recommending that this does move forward to the public hearing and for approval based on the fact that ADA accessibility is something that we're striving for throughout the city with our most recent ADA accessibility plan.
And, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
In talking to the leaseholder, this ramp does not intrude on any surrounding businesses. It's all totally encompassed in front of this property, their storefront.
Correct.
They moved the door to one side to allow for this. So I just want everybody to know that this isn't, there's no footprint on any neighboring businesses.
Correct. And the other thing to point out is that there still is required to be maintained a five-foot clear zone of the remaining public sidewalk so that we, as the city, retain ADA accessibility for our public sidewalk.
Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Any other questions or comments by the council before we unmute the mics on this one? Unmute away.
The lines are unmuted.
Very good. Let's call the roll on this one.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Number eight, resolution, one able.
Resolution approving change order one to the 2021 Phase II demolition contract with
itself, access from pedestrian ways, sidewalks, things of that nature, lighting, and you name it, the full scope. The estimated project cost in total is about 21 million, 21 and a half million is where we're at right now. The grant program allows for applications up to 25 million to be submitted. So we would be submitting for essentially the entire cost of the project. We do anticipate working with the DOT on some funding, and there may be portions that come from sources, but we do anticipate a substantial grant submission to be submitted. The application is due July 12th, so it is coming up here in a couple of weeks that it's due. We've been working with Bolton and Mink on preparation for this, as we did with the last year's grant award as well. So we've had some discussion, you know, with the DOT about our project and kind of preparing for that based on a follow-up from our last year's award, or debriefing from that award cycle, and trying to implement all those different components that we can. So entertain any questions, and thankfully, we do have Bolton and Mink here as well, and so if you actually have real questions, Greg can take those.
Any questions for Michelle or Bolton and Mink by the council?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Michelle, remind me, when we applied the first time, didn't we spend a lot just to do the application?
It is a significant application prep that requires a lot of engineering work.
I didn't see a cost estimate in here for this re-.
I believe we've already done that, correct?
Yeah, that was approved by the council, I believe, back in April.
May?
April or May. Or so, and I believe it was 25,000. Last year was 45,000. This year is cheaper because they had a lot of work that was already done and just need to be updated.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
So, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Sure, you can't win the lottery if you don't play, I guess. I don't play, so I'll never win. What other questions do the council have or comments to make? If none, let's unmute the mics again.
The lines are unmuted.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Let's vote.
Weirren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. That one carried, and I think maybe somebody voted twice, but maybe I was hearing things.
Yes.
Mike's throwing his voice again.
Thanks. You know, you could, can you impersonate Gabe Isom tonight? Onto the next resolution.
Tentative resolution setting public hearing providing for an easement agreement from the City of Marshalltown, Iowa to Archwire Rentals LLP for an ADA accessible ramp.
Anybody wish to move to approve?
I'll move to approve this, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Thanks. Discussion on this one.
Yeah, this is setting a public hearing on granting of an easement to Archwire Rentals LLP for the building, I believe it's at 229 13th Avenue North. Currently, there is a step to get up into that building. They're desiring to build a ramp to basically provide for ADA accessibility into the building. That would require part of the public sidewalk to be able to do so, and so we are recommending that this does move forward to the public hearing and for approval, based on the fact that ADA accessibility is something that we're striving for throughout the city with our most recent ADA accessibility plan.
And, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
In talking to the leaseholder, this ramp does not intrude on any surrounding businesses. It's all totally encompassed in front of this property, their storefront.
Correct.
They moved the door to one side to allow for this. So I just want everybody to know that this isn't, there's no footprint on any neighboring businesses.
Correct, and the other thing to point out is that there still is required to be maintained a five-foot clear zone of the remaining public sidewalk, so that we, as the city, retain ADA accessibility for our public sidewalk.
Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Any other questions or comments by the council before we unmute the mics on this one? Unmute away.
The lines are unmuted.
Very good. Let's call the roll on this one.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Very good. Sometimes I can't help myself with all the improvements on 13th Street and all the veterans that need help with mobility. I think that's a good move to make. Thank you. Onto the next resolution, number seven.
Tentative resolution providing for the vacation conveyance and transfer of the alley herein described from the City of Marshalltown, Iowa to Allen Health Systems, Inc., DBA Unity Point Health Waterloo.
Want to start with a motion?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Very good. Discussion.
Yes, this is a request from Unity Point, as they're looking at disposal of their properties in the downtown. As we look back, my blue line kind of blurs it, but there is a north-south-east-west alley that is between Fifth Avenue and their main campus that still exists, and so this is setting a public hearing to vacate that alley to Unity Point Health for $1.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Let's go ahead and unmute again. Let's go five seconds this time, it's been very quiet.
The lines are unmuted.
And I can see how many people are not on tonight remotely. Let's vote.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Number eight resolution, who unable?
Resolution approving change order one to the 2021 Phase II demolition contract with Lansing Brothers Construction Company, Inc., for an increase of $48,750.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
I'll second, Your Honor.
Very good. Discussion?
Yes, so I didn't want to put this on the consent agenda because it's quite unusual. Lansing Brothers Construction was our only bidder on the last bid, which was for four properties to all be treated as asbestos-containing materials. They will have that contract, I think it's $85,000. In the meantime, we have acquired two other buildings, two other properties to be treated as asbestos-containing, 105 North Second Avenue and 606 East Boone Street. I reached out to Chad with Lansing Brothers Construction to see what it would cost to get a change order for that, for those two properties, and it is $48,750. I recommend a change order because I do not believe in a bidding environment, we will find a better cost related to these, and then that will just delay it further from getting to one in a prominent location down a little bit sooner.
Very good. Questions or comments for Jessica or comments in general by the council? Crickets? Let's go unmute for five.
The lines are unmuted.
Roll call.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item?
Public hearing and resolution approving the voluntary annexation of certain real estate at 2430 233rd Street to the City of Marshalltown.
Move for approval.
Should I call the, I'll declare the public hearing open first, actually.
All right.
Let's do this. No problem, I've got a cheat sheet up here and I screw it up sometimes. Anyway, the public hearing is open at 6:01 PM. Did the clerk receive any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Now we call for public comments, and let's go five seconds. Tell me when you're unmuted.
The lines are unmuted.
Four, three, two, one. Staff review. Michelle?
Yes, Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. As was mentioned, this is an annexation request. It's going to get to the map here to just highlight the area we're talking about. This is on 233rd Street. You may recall that we had an annexation, probably been about a year ago now, of this property here on 233rd. We are now talking about the one highlighted in blue there. Again, we have a new construction of a home that is connecting to city water and sewer services, and therefore, we're looking at annexation. And so, that is the request before you, to approve that annexation. We would recommend approval since we do border city boundaries on that, and we, like I said, have done the other property just to the west recently as well.
Very good, thank you. Any questions or comments for Michelle or in general? Unmute.
We've already unmuted, Your Honor.
That's right. You see, I knew I could screw it up even though I had written instructions up here. It is now time for council comments, are there any? I guess I called for that too, didn't I? So I think I get to safely declare the public hearing is closed at 6:03 PM, and oh no, we've got another one coming up next. Should we call for any further action on number nine or go to number 10?
Your Honor, I move that we accept the resolution to annex the property into the city.
Thank you. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Very good. Roll call.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Okay, that carried as well, thank you. Number 10 then, who unable?
Public hearing and resolution providing for the conveyance and transfer of title of Lot 1 and Lot 2 of the VA Hope Bluffs First Edition herein described from the City of Marshalltown, Iowa, to Iowa River Hospice, Inc.
I declare this public hearing is open at 6:04 PM. Did you receive any written comments at the clerk's office?
No, Your Honor.
Time to unmute for public comments just once this time.
The lines are unmuted.
Time for staff review.
Yes, as you'll recall, we hired a realtor to list these properties, and the highest bid received was from Iowa River Hospice. The council did approve the final plat of the VA Hope Bluffs subdivision at the last city council meeting, so we are ready to convey newly created property.
Very good, thank you. Time for council comments. Hearing done, I declare the public hearing open, is closed, rather, at 6:04 PM, and would entertain another motion to approve that resolution.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Onto item J, ordinances, just one tonight. Would you read that one for us?
Ordinance 15021, an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances, City of Marshalltown, Iowa, by repealing Chapter 31.047, establishing the Board of Community Center Trustees. First reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
Second, Your Honor.
I'll leave it to the clerk to figure out who is on first, and let's call for comments or questions or discussion.
Your Honor, I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
Just want to clarify with the public, is there another board that's going to be formed that is either private or public to replace this one? I'm not sure if that's out for Jessica or if that's for Karn.
Yeah, so I can share, there is the Fisher Governor Foundation Board of Trustees, which I have been asked to be a part of.
And that's a private?
Yes.
That's not mayor-appointed?
Correct.
Okay. So there is no, once this one dissolves, there is no mayor-appointed board?
Correct.
I just wanted to clarify that for the public. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Just trying to make it easier for the next schmuck that is the next mayor. And to be honest, it isn't easy to find capable candidates that are willing to serve on the boards, commissions, and committees that we have that keep the city running under the eyesight of most of us. Okay, any other, let's, if there are no other comments by the council, let's open the mics again.
The lines are unmuted.
I can't believe I said "poor schmuck." It's actually become kind of fun lately, so we're looking for somebody that would like this great job.
I do have a follow-up question, Your Honor.
Go for it.
If, I mean, is there any interest in, on this one to, can we do this all in one reading, or is there any reason to go all three on this one?
That exceeds my pay grade.
So I would say there is no reason to move this along quicker. That's not been requested, but if the council would like to do that, I don't think there would be any objections, so.
I mean, for the scope of their work, is there, I guess I would like a little input from someone from the, I mean, are you looking for us to move this along quicker, Karn?
Yes, that would be wonderful.
That was a yes. I would move that we repeal this and waive the second and third readings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, so we'll vote now on the motion to waive the second and third readings.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirren?
Yes.
Very good. And I'm not smart enough to know if we now need another vote to approve it now that it's been waived. Probably to do bill and suspenders, let's call the roll again for the whole ordinance itself that will be passed if this vote passes. So roll call again.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Onto discussion items, okay, and the first one of those is the Center Street viaduct update. I see Justin approaching the mic.
Good evening, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. With us tonight are Tony Bauer and Dean Beerwagen from Stanley Consultants. They were selected based on qualifications earlier in the year for the inspection and the assessment of the Center Street viaduct and what repairs are necessary for that. Without further ado, I will turn it over to Tony and Dean.
Thank you, Council. Tony Bauer, Stanley Consultants, Des Moines, Iowa. I just wanted to say thank you, appreciate the opportunity to catch you guys up on exactly what we have done to date. As Justin said, we've completed our evaluation, and we are ready to kind of share some of our recommendations with the council, so we can proceed and move forward into design and ultimately into the repair of the bridge. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I'll turn it over to our lead structural engineer who has done most of the work, so.
Okay, Dean Beerwagen from Stanley Consultants of Des Moines, and I'll try and keep it brief, but talking to my kids, they'll tell you when I get into bridges, sometimes I get long-winded, so. But basically, I'll give you just a brief description, history, and then go over the highest priority items that we found in our review of the bridge, and then additional items that we feel are in need of repair, and then fix everything now option, and then we threw in a complete replacement, although we wouldn't recommend, we think the bridge is repairable, and then if we have time, detailed repair breakdown, and then a summary. Okay, just a, it's a nice-sized bridge, a little over 700 feet long, 36-foot roadway, you have sidewalks on each side around four foot five. Total of 20 spans, rolled steel beams, spans 56 to 102 feet, four expansion joints, and based on, I think it was a 2013 estimate, about a little over 1,100 vehicles a day across the bridge. Just a quick view of the south side looking north. History of the repairs on the bridge, it was opened in 1951, there was repairs done in '66, a deck repair, and the bearings repaired '76, a complete overlay in '77, and then 2005, under the city, there was a significant rehab project that was done on the bridge. The sidewalks replaced, some gland replacements, the separation barrier was installed between the traffic and the sidewalk. Repairs on the north abutment, and pedestrian railing was repainted, repairs to the bridge piers, minor repairs, and then the drainage system underneath the bridge was replaced, the collection system for stormwater. Okay, so the bottom line, the dollars. Main issue we have is we feel the roller bearings, finger expansion joints need to be replaced at the pier eight and 14 location. Those main finger joints you see while going over the bridge. Along with that work, at least some partial zone repaint of the beam ends at those expansion joints. Possible re-overlay of the north abutment, that vaulted north abutment that, I don't like saying on the north side of it. Recommend replacing the deck drains, repair to the, or repaint of the pedestrian railing to tune about $100,000. Repair the north vaulted abutment, inside and out, there's some deterioration. Repair the south abutment, mainly the expansion joints, and then some miscellaneous repairs, mainly on the separation barrier, there's some deterioration. So the highest priorities, we're looking at around $1.5 million. What we think is, this bare bones needed repair. So additional items that could be done, possibly delayed, a complete repaint of the steel beams on the bridge, repainting is expensive, about $2.5 million. A re-overlay of the entire bridge deck, like I say, it was overlaid in '77, a re-overlay to the tune about $700,000. Remove and replace the pedestrian railing, $770,000, and then some miscellaneous minor repairs around the bridge, be an additional $40,000. So the main, the additional repair, the main issues, the repainting, but adding that all up, you get about, it's about $4 million on the bridge. So, you know, if a person wants to bite the bullet, fix everything now option, you know, kind of summing up those first two options in a, in kind of a joint repair, it'd be the roller bearings, a complete repaint now would be a little cheaper, re-overlay, replace the deck drains, upgrade the pedestrian railing in north vaulted abutment, south abutment, and the minor repairs, we're looking at, we estimate around $5 million to do a, like, repair everything now. In comparison, we did a, I would say, a rough estimate on a complete bridge replacement, if you assume replacing the steel with pre-stress concrete, and if you went with a similar-sized bridge, about 700, same 36-foot roadway, two six-foot sidewalks, and we estimating, you know, working over the railroad, we know it's going to add some additional cost, we figured it'd be about $150 a square foot. For a new bridge, a little over $12.5 million to replace in kind with a pre-stress. Existing bridge removal would be separate, about $800,000, and to bring a contractor in mobilization, and then the unknowns, you know, as far as the cost of putting in a bridge that size, we threw in about a 20% contingency. So you're looking to completely replace the bridge, it'd possibly be around $18 million. So we included this just for comparison only. So the detailed breakdown of the repairs, I think, I think a lot of people have mentioned the biggest issue is those main expansion joints and the finger joints over those two piers. Through the years, like I said, the bridge was open in '51, you have open joints, you've had a lot of moisture, salt brine, get in there, and there's issues with corrosion of that area. In our evaluation, we went in, took pictures, you know, some pretty good corrosion, loss of section, some concerns, you know, you really don't want to let it go much longer. Along with it, the expansion joints, when this bridge was overlaid, they came in, they raised the surface, they welded in a bunch of bars, and I think if you look at those finger joints crossing them, you can see a lot of those bars have been knocked loose, they're broken. In addition, we saw in our examination, we noticed that the finger joints were actually vertically out of alignment a little bit. I don't know if that was due to the corrosion or what completely is happening underneath there, but just some pictures, I'm sure you crossing the bridge, you notice there's a pretty good bump at each of the finger joints. Cost, doing kind of a breakdown of the cost, the bearings and joint replacements, in order to do that work, to completely take it out and replace it, you're going to have to provide some temporary supports, and that adds some cost, but the bare bones to replace, to refabricate and put in some new sections there, it's about $400,000, along with the additional costs of support and removal, low-profile bearings, and then, I think, talking to some of the joint manufacturers, I think in this day and age, you can get in a waterproof joint there, so you could get that finger joint out of there, put in a waterproof joint and protect that area for the rest of the bridge's life. So I should mention, so total cost for those two locations, about $840,000, I mentioned earlier. The deck drains, the original deck drains from this bridge in '51, they were raised with the overlay, and I think they're starting to show some deterioration as well. Well, if you, if you take out the finger joints and replace that waterproof, those joints, you could remove those deck drains, that full-width deck drain, and just put in a drainage system in the shoulders, so get it out of the travel way, kind of improve the ride. I think to replace that, to pull it out and cast in a deck and put in deck drains just on the shoulder, you'd be looking about $185,000. The system underneath the bridge was replaced 2005, that collection system, it's galvanized. I think we could reuse that and save some funds there. Paint system, like I said, it's a big item anymore with steel bridges. There's, at the expansion joints, you've seen the most corrosion, loss of section, those areas for sure need to be repainted. On the south side, you know, if you're under the bridge looking, there's a fair amount of paint peeling, spans one through nine. Northern spans in better shape. So just some shots underneath the bridge in the railroad yard, and on the south side, you know, there's some corro, not corrosion so much as the paint peeling off. So some options, you could focus on just the joints, repaint, you know, protect those joints, or you could do a zone painting about 750 feet on the south side where the paint has really started to peel, or a complete repainting, as I mentioned earlier, about $2.2 million. A future, if you delay it, future would probably cost a little bit more, I think about $2.5 million. So I'd say one of the positive things about this bridge So, so I'd say one of the positive things about this bridge, looking at it, is I, I don't know what all was done in the past on it, but the deck's in really pretty good shape for a bridge that was built in 19, you know, deck was built in 1951, overlaid in 77. I felt that the deck itself was one of the more positive things, I felt it was in really good shape. We did some corrings, the overlay was in pretty good shape as well. Looking at options for repairing, I noticed there's a lot of cracking on the north abutment overlay, you could just overlay that, about $115,000. You remove and completely overlay it, it's about $800,000. One thing we threw out there, an option that's been tried in Iowa, and hasn't really gained a lot of experience, is to do a thin bonded overlay, seal the whole thing, and the few that I've seen tried at the DOT level have actually been fairly expensive, about $915,000 would be an estimate on this bridge. North abutment, I know it's, it's what they call a vaulted abutment, so it's like, it's got a, an open area inside where the local gun club has a shooting range. As I mentioned, the overlay has some cracking, and there's some leakage on the expansion joints. The outside of the wall, there's some deterioration, especially on the, beyond the west side, there's some, that area that needs to be repaired, you know, the longer you let it go, the, I'd say the more, more deterioration you'll see. But, but the main concern I saw was on the inside, there was, there was a fair amount of leakage at the joints located on the, on the top of the deck, that was getting down inside, and there was some corrosion, areas that had been repaired in 2005 and were coming apart again. So, so to get in there, repair that, guessing around 40,000, to seal it up, replace the joints, on the intermediate joints inside the vaulted, it'd be about, I'm guessing about 15,000, replace the joint where the superstructure comes in and connects the abutment, would be about 40,000. I know there would probably be some discussion, but I think in order to get that work done, the, the ductwork and lighting that's in there right now is going to have to be pulled out, so the contractor can do proper work. But total cost to get that north abutment repaired is, we were estimating around a little over $100,000. Pedestrian railing, it was painted and repaired in 2005, the current railing isn't ADA compliant, and just walking across it, there's, you know, there's a fair amount of paint loss on the railing. You know, you could, you could clean it up and try and get a little more life out of it, you know, for, I'm guessing around $100,000. You could replace it with a chain link fence, you know, as kind of a bare bones. Over the railroad, they'd probably require a little higher chain length, I think 10-foot is what UP would probably require, or you could do a complete replacement with a decorative railing, looking at around $770,000 is our estimate. So, so kind of a, like I said, that was a quick kind of reader's digest summary. In summary, you know, the bare bones minimum that we're recommending, as I mentioned earlier, is about 1.5 million. You know, it extend, you know, it'd give you another five to 10 years, you know, a completely do-it-all repair for 5 million, we're thinking you could get another 20, 25 years out of the bridge, so. Like I said, me and, kind of the bridge side, I think it's a cool bridge, so, so. No, that was all I had.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Or, you know, I notice as I'm approaching age 70, the joints don't work quite as well either. Any public comments?
The lines are unmuted.
Thank you.
And, and just one clarification, so this is just the big overview, we've got another few items to get to before we'll talk about this in terms of dollars and cents and what it looks like with our bonding capacity.
Thank you. Okay, we've been unmuted for 10 seconds. Let's go on and talk about the downtown improvement plan.
And, and I should, I need to correct this because it is actually the downtown implementation plan, and I have no idea what I was thinking as I was putting these items together, but we do have Casey Byers with Bolton &amp; Mink here to present the downtown implementation plan.
Thank you, good evening, Casey Byers, landscape architect, Bolton &amp; Mink, out of Des Moines. Appreciate being here. This is a project that we started last fall for the city, kind of in the midst of the pandemic, and it was a pretty interesting project to get off the ground, and we had to use some kind of different tactics in terms of how we engage the community and how we bring people along during the process, but overall, we had a really great, a great project, a lot of feedback was gained through the process, and we were able to, I think, complement the 2019 downtown master plan quite well, so. Really, the, the objective of this was to come up with an implementation strategy for that downtown master plan that you all completed in 2019. Some of the primary goals of that plan were to create a multimodal downtown, to, to bring bikes and pedestrians and vehicles into the same space, and, and do so efficiently and safely. One of the, the key elements of that plan was to create a vibrant and attractive destination. You know, the, the phrase of being a, an active, active space, an active downtown, something that is vibrant 18 hours a day was repeated in that document. Providing a safe and efficient means of parking and circulation options, I'm going to speak a little bit about the parking analysis we did, but parking was a hot topic during that, that downtown plan. And ultimately, we want to provide achievable recommendations, something that is right-size for, for Marshalltown, and is going to facilitate the needs of your community. So, our, our project was, was really broken into four main components. The first is a pavement assessment, which my colleague Greg Bressard is here to answer any questions about, but essentially doing an analysis of all the pavement in downtown, the roadway, sidewalks, and alleys. We're looking at an implementation plan for converting church and Lynn streets to two-way. We performed an angle parking analysis for the entire downtown area, and ultimately developed a streetscape enhancement plan for the central business district. So first off, I want to start by looking at some of the, the common themes that we found in our public outreach, and they really centered around kind of these four, four main items, parking, and, you know, the, the efficient use of it, and the different options for parking, making sure that parking is, is installed at adequate dimensions, improving connections to parking lots and, and to downtown, so looking at some of the underutilized alleys, you know, that was a, a big component of the 2019 plan, was to consider turning vehicular alleys into pedestrian spaces. And when considering the use of landscaping, just simply to not overcommit from street trees and plant material and decorative pavements, but, but do so in a way that is with purpose and at a right size. So before we could really start diving into what, what all these improvements are going to come together to look like, we really needed to study, you know, what we have today, and no one is going to argue that walking across the street, or walking down the sidewalk, that the pavement is failing. There's a lot of deteriorating, deterioration in the pavement in downtown, but there's also a lot of deterioration in the pavements throughout your community, so we need to, we need to think about where this fits in the grand scheme of improvements, and for us to be able to do that, we needed to develop a pavement management plan that, that considers different treatment options and the life cycle of your existing pavement, and start to kind of prioritize where to spend money and where to, to make improvements. So the, the first portion was that, that pavement assessment, and essentially what we were trying to do is come up with different types of treatments for, for different areas of downtown, and evaluating really the, the different cost scenarios with each type of treatment plan, and looking at how that's going to improve the, the pavement condition index for all the different pavement in downtown. Essentially, this is a scale of zero to 100, zero being a dirt road, absence of pavement, and 100 being a, a brand-new road. So we looked at where the PCI value was with different budget scenarios in mind, so we looked at a $1 million budget, $2 million budget, $5 million, and $10 million, and kind of looked at how these different scenarios would, would chart out, and, and kind of see where they would kind of come together and kind of meet up with one another. So right now, if you're looking at where we are today, pavement condition index around a 40, we, we started to look at kind of where these, these lines kind of come together, and, and kind of decided that it's probably about a 10-year plan, and if we utilize a $2 million a year budget to, to run this scenario, it would, it would allow us to kind of catch up what, to what that, you know, $5 and $10 million investment would look like annually. So how did we use this information? We, we took all this together, and we, we used the, the outcome of the pavement management plan to essentially come up with a sequential list of, of priorities, charted on a timeline. So looking at, if we were going to repair and upgrade all of the, the pavement and the sidewalks, the, put in the street trees, do all the decorative stuff that I'm going to share with you in a little bit, all total, that's, that's approximately $35 million in investment for downtown. That's a substantial number, we know that, that is a, a big price tag, so we started looking at how we could phase these improvements. And so we took the, we took the data that we got from the pavement management plan to essentially kind of align what we thought would be manageable projects to break this, this large, complete project cost into manageable phases. So each one of these is essentially a different phase, and in our report, in the, in the beginning of the document, there's a, there's a phasing summary, and there's a cost summary that, that identifies what the cost is for each phase, that also includes design fees and a construction contingency into those. So we split this into, into eight phases, and this is just an example from, from the report that identifies what each phase is, a description of, of, of each phase, everything from the roadway and utility improvements, sidewalk amenities, alley improvements, crosswalks, et cetera, and a estimated cost to go along with this. One thing that is extremely important to understand with this, this isn't just replacing the pavement. What we determined as we started looking at the life cycle of, of the pavement, was that we could, we could come in and we could do different mill and overlay projects, crack sealing, different pavement repair, but further discussions with public work staff and Marshalltown Waterworks led to the understanding that, that the utilities underneath these streets are quite old and in disrepair. I think our understanding was that some of the newest water main in downtown Marshalltown dates back to the 1930s. So with that in mind, these costs increased significantly, and we looked at each one of these projects as, as a complete reconstruction. So these costs do include all of the water main, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer replacement within the right-of-way. Just going to kind of skip ahead to, through some of those summaries. The, the second part of our, our scope was to, to look at the one, one-way to two-way conversion of church and Lynn streets. I, I've been working in Marshalltown for the last five or six years, and I understand that this has been a topic of, of great discussion over many years, and I know this was discussed when we did the Highway 14 plan, and it was discussed during the 2019 downtown master plan, and our, our charge was to come up with an implementation strategy for finally making this change. Historically, one-way streets were put in, in, in similar communities as a means of getting people through your community, through your downtown faster and more efficiently. That has since proven to be not that effective on downtown businesses, and that's why you see a lot of these one-way streets getting converted back to two-way. Some of the, the reasoning behind these one-way streets may have been driven by a shift change at a local industry, you know, peak, peak traffic in and out of downtown, but ultimately, we want people to get into downtown efficiently, but do so slowly and, and stay here, not just pass through. So while we were looking at what it would take to make these changes, there's essentially three different kind of groups of components that go into this, and there's all the kind of orange dots on here, items that are relatively easily, easily implemented, so things like cutting back trees and improving the view shed at certain intersections, signage, striping, that kind of thing. The red dots on here are items that are going to require further design and, and construction, so bump outs and making intersection modifications to improve sightlines from parking and stop signs, and then we had two other items on here at the intersections of Center and Church and Center and Lynn, where we would need to look at a different treatment for that intersection. So these two intersections are currently controlled with traffic signals. We did a warrant analysis for the traffic signals at each of these intersections, and they do not meet warrants for a traffic signal, and, and that causes a couple of different things. One, with the traffic signal, these, the existing equipment that's there is extremely outdated, the, the accessibility at these intersections for the pet ramps, it doesn't meet ADA accessibility. And if the city would ever want to replace these traffic signals, and, and potentially go after any public funding, they would be unable to do so just because they simply aren't warranted for these, these intersections. So we looked at alternatives to what, what could be done here, and one of the things that we would recommend is the consideration of a circular intersection or a mini roundabout at, at each of these intersections. These have proven effective in other communities with, with similar intersections, and really kind of fit the, the right-of-way space that you have at each of these intersections. A couple of things that we noted in our, in our report was that the, the types of crashes that are happening at these, these intersections are typically a T-bone or a head-on collision, and the circular intersection virtually eliminates, eliminates that from happening. These tend to result in more kind of a glancing incident where you don't have the, the head-on collision, and if you think about the number of points of contact or points of conflict at this intersection, a traditional intersection, there's 32 points of conflict, so there's 32 opportunities to hit something. The circular intersection reduces that down to eight. So they become safer, you, you have opportunities for pedestrian refuge space, so you're able to shorten the crossing distance at the intersection, and it, it takes away the necessity for a traffic signal. So we did a, we did a comparison to a traditional signalized intersection with the circular intersection, and, and looked at several different things, pedestrian safety, vehicle crash reduction, driver delay, pedestrian delay, and ultimately cost. You know, quite honestly, the, the circular intersection scores really well in those, in that comparison, and, you know, although there's a, a cost associated with rebuilding the intersection as a circular intersection, rebuilding this intersection is inevitable at, at, at some time, and I think we have it in here as a, as a later phase of implementation, somewhere around the phase four, phase five area, but it'll ultimately need to be rebuilt. So if you're rebuilding it, consideration So if you're rebuilding it, consideration for this type of intersection could be a good idea, and it wouldn't necessitate the additional cost that would come with adding a signal in addition to rebuilding the intersection. In the report, we've kind of split this into additional phases as well, so we've taken each component of the two-way conversion and split this into three different phases. The first phase focuses on Church Street, the second phase on Lynn, and then the third phase is further down on Lynn Street from Ninth to Third Street. So there are different things that are going to need to happen with this change. There's a few blocks that are very narrow right now, so when the pavement reaches the point where it needs to be replaced, potentially widening that to allow two-way traffic in a lane of parking would be included in that step. So getting into kind of the parking analysis, one thing that we started looking at was just what your existing streets consist of. We use Main Street as an example here. We have seven-and-a-half-foot parallel parking lane, four-foot bike lane, and two 12-foot travel lanes. Our analysis, you know, kind of told us that, you know, seven-and-a-half feet is a really narrow parking space, and four foot for a bike lane really doesn't meet any type of standard for a safe and effective bike lane. So we looked at kind of how we could use those dimensions to kind of inform how we apply dimensions to other streets. We also looked at the sidewalks and kind of broke those down into different zones, trying to kind of maintain what we think is an acceptable minimum for a sidewalk on Main Street. So we started by kind of doing an analysis of all the streets in downtown, and essentially what we came up with was the recommendation that you could implement parking on one side of the street, angled parking on one side of the street on Main Street, and parallel on the other side. There was only a couple other kind of few instances where we would recommend angled parking. For the most part, it would stay as parallel on both sides or parallel on one side. One significant change that we looked at was the idea of taking bike lanes off of Main Street and putting them on State Street. So with the addition of angled parking on Main Street, we think that it's, you know, bikes and angled parking don't really go well together. Nobody likes biking or backing out of an angled parking space into a bike lane, and the cyclist dislikes it even more. So we thought that, you know, creating a really strong north-south connection into downtown with bike lanes on Center Street, and then actually having a two-way cycle track on State Street at the roadway level creates a really nice east-west connection through downtown. Each one of these circles here are where we've identified opportunities for bicycle parking and other amenities. You could have a fix-it station, you could have benches, litter receptacles, other site furnishings to cater to that. But looking at distributing those amenities throughout downtown to cater to this bicycle network. Here's just a cross-section of what that cycle track looks like. So what we're able to do here is maintain an eight-foot parking lane, two 11-foot travel lanes, a buffer, and then our bike lanes, one lane in each direction. We looked at just pedestrian circulation and access to pedestrian alleys and connections to parking lots. So this map identifies where each public parking lot is in downtown, shows where we think pedestrian alleys could be implemented. You already have some that are proving to be very effective. And just looking at kind of the proximity of those alleys within a one-to-one-and-a-half-minute and two-to-three-minute walking radius. So it shows you that, you know, downtown Marshalltown is pretty walkable when you consider potentially utilizing these pedestrian alleys to connect to some of those parking lots. Next, we looked at where street trees belong in downtown. Kind of like all these improvements, there's really not a one-size-fits-all solution here, and we think that implementing street trees can really only be done on the streets where you have wider sidewalks, so that you have enough space for the street tree to actually have a chance at surviving and provide a pedestrian clear zone and some space along the building fronts. So we're really looking at State Street, Center, Main, and around the four sides of the Courthouse Square. And in our report, we've detailed some additional information about how street trees should be planted and what species should be considered for planting in downtown. We looked at intersection improvements, so things like bump outs and landscape beds at intersections. Our general statement is that if there's on-street parking, the city should consider putting in bump outs into that parking lane to shorten the crosswalk and to allow some additional pedestrian space. And really, you know, what the bump out does really well is it allows you to actually get an accessible sidewalk and get a pet ramp installed because you actually have a little more distance to make up that slope. So here's just some images of, you know, some of the general treatments that we think could really accent some of these primary intersections in downtown Marshalltown. Here's an enlargement rendering of kind of what we have proposed for kind of a typical Main Street intersection. So here we have a very clearly defined pedestrian access route. You have your intersection bump outs. You have some opportunities for some decorative pavement. You have opportunities for some bench seating and site furnishings, but all just kind of creating a space for these items to belong in the intersection. Here's just some details of typical improvements along Main Street. So again, here you have your angled parking on one side of the street, you have parallel on the other. Similar to what you have now in front of the bike shop, we're proposing kind of a sequence of kind of this mid-block bump out that would allow for some expanded outdoor dining space potentially, or other kind of flexible pedestrian space. Here's a 3D perspective rendering of kind of what that Center and Main Street intersection would feel like with these improvements in place. So we have our bump out, we have some opportunities for landscape treatments, some monumentation for some branding, and some other information. We also noted kind of all four corners of the square utilizing some decorative lighting. This could be determined later date, but could be opportunities for sculpture and commissioning artists to integrate lighting and art into the four corners of the square. This is an image of what that mid-block bump out could feel like. So you still have your dedicated pedestrian access route, kind of clear zone here. You have some decorative pavement, potentially some cafe tables, benches, and other seating opportunities, and then kind of a landscape buffer between the seating area and the travel We want to draw a little more attention to State Street as well, as we were making some pretty big changes there with the cycle track. But different from Main Street, you know, other than having some of the street trees that line the corridor, we really focus the decorative treatments to primary intersections. So we, again, trying to utilize those materials thoughtfully, you know, put them at places where people are going to congregate, where you're going to have other amenities, but really focus on the mid-block scenario as a nice, clean sidewalk with some street trees along State. This is kind of a special case scenario where you have a parking lot here, as recommended in the 2019 plan. Having a buffer between the sidewalk and these on-street parking lots creates a nice transition there and really keeps cars kind of where they're supposed to be and from not hanging over the sidewalk. This is another image of kind of what State Street feels like here. So very similar to Main with the monumentation right outside of the door here. This is a shot of what that cycle track could be. This is rendered green here for the purposes of illustrating it, but by no means would the city necessarily have to commit to painting this green, but it's something that is done in other communities to really delineate what that cycle track could be. But this would be a tremendous amenity and really give cyclists a safe place to access downtown and access your local trails. So that, very quickly, is the downtown implementation plan.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Casey, can you go back to the slide where you have the inset of the distance to walk to Walmart? I want you to publicly dispel the myth that we don't have parking downtown. It's a perception problem, because we have tons of parking downtown. So if you could touch on the distance you walk when you park at Walmart, because that's the big argument we get, that really you walk less downtown even if you don't park in front of the business.
Yeah, so we did this little enlargement here to kind of illustrate. This is your local Walmart, kind of where somebody may park and what that distance is to get into the store and eventually find a gallon of milk or something else. But, you know, a one-to-one-and-a-half-minute walk is not very far, and, you know, quite often, we just, we think that we need to park immediately outside of where we're going to. But as the 2019 Master Plan identified, you know, 50% of the land area in downtown Marshalltown is dedicated to parking. That's a significant amount, and this is a common perception in most communities, the lack of parking. But really, you know, a lot of it comes down to utilization of your surface lots, and I think the more that the city can do to encourage people, business owners, you know, employees working downtown, as well as visitors and patrons, to use those surface lots will help kind of settle that myth a little bit. But it's not easy, and it takes improving some of the connections to get there. It improves the lighting and the condition of those lots. We heard a lot that people just simply don't feel safe walking to and from their vehicle parked in a public lot. So that's something that needs to be improved and something that needs to be worked on, as well as just signage for the public lots. You know, some people just may not understand where free surface lot parking is.
Thank you. Thanks, Casey. Thanks, Your Honor.
You may. Any other questions or comments?
Your Honor?
Ms. Martin?
I've long been skeptical of the traffic flow, especially on the streets that are Church and Lynn, and I feel that that input has been underrepresented grossly in this plan, any plan. Those streets go west, and they go east, post office, and so on. There is a genuine concern on the part of residents of parking and width of street especially, and at least one of those streets goes back to the horse-and-buggy days when the width was much less than what we have now. I think, however, there is room for a compromise. I haven't been talked to about that. I'm concerned that others have concerns that council members have received, but there's been no action or representation of that, as far as I'm concerned, on the advisory board and so on. I have concerns as well as to angled parking. Backing into traffic is not wise. It's not safe. We have plenty of parking, as we're just reviewing here, very adequate, improved parking. Maybe the lighting needs some improvement, but the access to those spots is there. And there are also private parking for businesses, and that adds to the accessibility. I, myself, am positive about the outcome and the need for improvements downtown. I don't like the fact that we just brought up bidding a downtown business operation with an outside mall type of thing. I think that was grossly unfair. I think overall, the plan is good. It needs amortization. Certainly, we cannot afford anything that's so comprehensive all at once. You recognize that as well. Some things may be not needed or compensated for in other ways, hopefully saving some funds, but this is a long-term bonding project, and everyone knows we have other projects that are ongoing, such as the airport, for one example. That's economic development as well. So while I am generally supportive of this plan, and there's a lot of work been involved in this, I appreciate that fully. I have reservations about traffic flow and parking. I don't think they've been thought through thoroughly, nor have people affected in those residential areas been listened to effectively either. So I'll think here at this point.
Other comments or questions by the council? Let's unmute the mics. And go 10 this time. Okay, very good. Does staff need any direction on this discussion item?
We're going to move into that here shortly.
Okay. Next item then, initial review of the four-year '22 general obligation borrowing.
Yes, so I'm going to close a few things here. So as you'll recall, back in January in the budget process, we talked to you about how there were two big things, the viaduct and the downtown implementation plan, which we knew would not be done until really that June timeframe, and we are here in that timeframe. Those things have now been completed, and so we can bring forward that discussion about borrowing once again. And so I put together an updated debt capacity workbook, which we'll talk about, but first I kind of want to run through some of the math of how these numbers are arrived at. And so we work with Spear Financial, who basically looked at our debt capacity calculations and broke things down. I should note that this is all based on a 0.5% annual growth, which is what we saw for fiscal year '22. That's that confirmed number. We believe that it could be higher in the future, but history is sometimes our best predictor, and so we are being very conservative here, showing what 0.5% annual growth does annually. And so in Iowa, you cannot borrow basically more than 5% of your total, your legal debt capacity is 5% of your total valuation. So we have a number that is basically set, and it's out there. And so when we get into things, we basically take out what debt we already have, and then what TIF agreements do not have an annual appropriations clause. And so that's where we start to get to some of these numbers. We then have a further policy, which Councilmember Lottie Hoff challenged me a little bit to look up here this afternoon, that was adopted in 1997, a debt policy adopted in 1997, that basically says we cannot borrow even though we are allowed basically says we cannot borrow, even though we are allowed this, this bigger number, we cannot borrow more than 60% of that. And so that's what this calculation shows and I, I want to point out a few things. So we know that this is our number, 51 million, almost 52 million. Using that 0.5% growth, we see basically $300,000 in growth from year to year essentially. And so growing our taxable val, or growing our assessed valuations and taxable valuations is very important because that's going to drive what, what we can borrow at the future, what that 60% looks like. So when we come down to it, you'll see some numbers that kind of match between spreadsheets, but you can look at these numbers here and say that, you know, based on what we grow from valuation, what we pay off in debt and in, payoff in debt and in our TIF rebate agreements, we're gaining about $5 million per year essentially. And so that's sort of the new debt that's opening up each year at that 60% limit is about $5 million. And so then we take it to this spreadsheet, which that starting number was the same starting number for fiscal year '22. We have not borrowed that full $500,000 of the forgivable shared wall loan, but I wanted to count for it on here, so it's at least obvious to everybody. We do believe that will be forgivable when we have completed our borrowing of that, but you, you don't know, so we've got it here in this tentative position. As I noted in my memo, the items in yellow are things that have had changes from where we, where we were talking during the budget process to where we are now. Before I get into those details, I do kind of want to talk, you know, just show you broadly, you know, what we have in here, which is two, has two assumptions built in, which is the viaduct work happening in phases, but this does include the planning and design of it, the design specifications, as well as then using $2 million of what is the American Rescue Plan funds towards Phase One of the Downtown Implementation Plan. So I've made some assumptions based on what I knew you would be hearing tonight to pre-program some things in. I can't tell you, I can bring this up in the Excel spreadsheet form if you would like to start changing some things around and we can certainly do that. But the big thing is that regardless of the year, we are really seeing way more than $5 million worth of projects each year. And as you can see, kind of in the later years, that's truly where we get into really just street things and not some of the other quality of life projects that come up. So just to kind of run through these changes very briefly, you have already committed to borrow $200,000 for the softball complex parking lot to complete that second phase at the prices that Construct was offering for the first phase. And so that one is a, you can't change that number right now. It's, it's locked in. We, Riverview Park was originally supposed to be $500,000. I don't think we, we really had the, the time to put into sort of thought of what that number meant, other than it was past projects, but clearly Riverview Park is a very different park now than it was. And so we, we believe that kind of before just going ahead and making some improvements that were kind of defined, that we should really be talking about what is Riverview Park in the future. So that $30,000 is for a master plan, which would then probably come back with phases to have a discussion in the fiscal year 2023 budget process and see if there's anything that could fit in with that. The Sixth Street Trail Connection, this would be basically connecting from the north side of the Notton property. A very big chunk of that, about 500,000, is a new bridge across Lynn Creek. That, there's some things with the existing bridge that would certainly need to be done in terms of repairs. In looking about what that looked like, it's about $300,000 for those repairs and you're left with a bridge that is still an old bridge. So you spend a lot of money to make something function or you spend a little bit more money to make something brand new. And the, the brand new sort of fits with what is the recommendation for the Iowa Rivers Edge Trail in total. Yes?
Question, Jessica. I, I don't know when or how we got the Sixth Street Trail connection on the budgetary pages and so on. I don't know as the council took direct action on this.
No, it was in the CIP, so this was back there in January and it was, it was proposed to be in this next fiscal year, the fiscal year that starts later this week, but everything is still up for discussion. So that's where none of these things, except for the softball complex parking lot, because you've taken an additional action, is set in stone. So that's where, it came forward from one process that had tentative approval to it, but nothing was going to be finalized until you all had had this final conversation.
It was proposed by whom?
I, myself, probably Jeff. I'd have to go back and see if, if it was something that I put together, but it was in the capital improvement plan.
Okay, I question that and I will continue to question that as an expense that's private, should be privatized.
Yeah, and so this is, this is the cost, or this is the piece that would go basically adjacent to Sixth Street on the Legion property or part of the Legion property.
Understood.
So it's not what we've talked about before under the development agreement with Prime Development Group. So it's a separate piece there.
Excuse me, Jessica, Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Jessica, I'm, I'm sorry, maybe it's this side of the room, but I don't remember the bridge cost being in that. I didn't think we had. I thought we were all operating under the assumption that that bridge could support bike traffic.
It, so it can support bike traffic, but there are things that you have to do to the pilings to make sure that they're, they're able to be supported. New railings need to be done and a complete new deck overlay.
I don't want to beat it to death tonight, but when you find that, because I'm at a loss like, like Counselor Martin is, I don't remember that number getting that big. And again, it might have been this side of the room, I don't know.
So this, this number did go up. I think I had it at 600,000 from what was initially discussed.
If you could find that and email it to us.
Yeah, yeah, I can definitely do that.
Thanks, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay.
Um, the other thing, we've got the viaduct in here. I did put it in the phases versus putting $5 million in here. That's something that we can always do. It was noted, and I think what, what Justin would, would say on here is, how many times do you want to close the viaduct? And I think that's really a, a choice for you. They did say that second phase of work was a five to 10 year. I placed it in the closest year on here, even though it's really probably about year four. So, but we didn't have fiscal year 2027 on, on this because it is kind of a five-year outlook. So I think as you consider that and where you put numbers at, it is a question of how often do you want to close the, the viaduct and what does that look like? One other thing that did change, so we did have numbers in here for the Highway 14 corridor. I have removed those. As was mentioned with the raised grant approval, the costs have changed. We are applying for nearly $21 million. If we are not awarded $21 million, just like other things, we would probably have to look at this in phases and what could be done in different phases, because ultimately the DOT is going to want to accomplish things. There are definitely infrastructure issues underneath the roadway that need to be taken care of and we won't want, we don't want to just do a simple mill and overlay and leave existing issues underneath. So that one could present us a, a challenge in the future as we look at the debt capacity, but we would be looking to have, you know, $21 million completed in, in phases versus one, one project, because as you can see, $21 million just doesn't fit anywhere here on this worksheet. Downtown Implementation Plan, so I added in 4.5 million of 6.5 million for Phase One A and Phase One B, which is State Street basically. Third Avenue to Third Avenue is the, is 6.4 million and then $100,000 from Third Avenue to Fifth Avenue. Third Avenue, Third Street. Yes, so six blocks and then just a few blocks that have some minor upgrades to them on the east side of Third Avenue. What I did do later on and, and started to program in an annual basis was looking at Phase Two, Two A, which I believe is Main, East Main Street. Phase Two B was Center Street. In Phase Three A, looking at West Main Street. I think I've, I think I got those correct. So, so we, we have those on there now. We know some costs, so we can definitely throw in some numbers. And then the final thing, I, I was thinking this was going to come. We did not have it figured out during budget time, but we have in the, in the last six months acquired a number of buildings. It does not look as though FEMA funding is going to be something that is going to come our way in the way that we had hoped when we were doing the budget process. And so as I went through and looked at what we have right now on hand, which is basically $285,000 on hand, that is not nearly enough to take care of the demolitions that we have. I should say that's 285,000 less the 48,750 that was just approved tonight. So we really have, you know, less than $240,000 with a number of projects that are going to be coming forward. And so I feel like 1.5 million can get us through what we know we have, as well as get us very close to probably what we are in the process of pursuing at this point too. And so that is a, a number that started to surprise me as we, we looked at things.
And, Your Honor?
Yes.
Jessica, so like when we bought the Anderson Building on Third Avenue for a dollar, thinking FEMA was going to tear it down, we found out, no, they're not. They're gonna, you know, majority of the cost. So the building's downtown? Have you got definitive answer on IBSA and stuff like that?
Um, so we, we have a, a meeting tomorrow. FEMA did send us a letter that had some very strict requirements for things that we need to do to try and even gauge eligibility. And so we, we feel that where there's probably only two of the five downtown where there could be eligibility. And so that's where we're, we're kind of at at this point. I will say that for the, the 330 South Third Avenue, we work with WHKS Engineering out of Ames to, to basically put together the plans and specifications, because it's not something that any of us have on staff, have experience with on, on staff to be able to do. And I appreciate that they are looking outside of the box to figure out if there's ways that we can maybe not treat everything as asbestos containing and see if we can put things out to bid in a way that requires a lot of sorting to happen on site, so that we're diverting what could potentially be asbestos can, you know, not asbestos containing from that stream in the landfill, which you've got a price difference of, I think, about $15 a ton there between asbestos containing and not.
So can I throw this out there for everyone to understand? With this new ordinance that we implemented with the vacant buildings, I've got to believe in the few years coming up, people are just going to let us have their buildings. So each one of those, you're estimating $200,000 average pop.
So 200,000 for like a downtown?
I understand.
Type setting, so downtown gets a lot trickier too when you've got some shared walls and other costs and planning.
But there, this number is gonna, we need to understand, this number's never going to go away because we're going to be eating this, taxpayers are going to be eating this cost of cleaning up the town.
Yeah, you know, I, I don't have any, you know, revenue built in on the calculation of disposal of some of these lots. You know, we, we've not been seeing a lot of money, but every, every time we do get money in, we are putting it back to that fund.
Goes right back in.
Yep. So, so that's kind of like the overview of this year. So there's 10, $10 million worth of cost that we've identified for 6.8 million dollars worth of capacity, meaning that we're automatically over that 60% threshold right away. I feel like tonight, there's, there's kind of a few options. There's the discussion of the merit of the 60% capacity policy and whether or not that is something to continue with in, in the short term or the long term. Like I said, as you can see here, if, if we're going to experience 0.5% growth, that number just isn't going to move very quickly. There are definitely some things on here that we can look at doing differently in reducing. I think it would be hard to keep everything in fiscal year '22, that's sort of some of the big projects, without having to bump some numbers one, one way or the next. I didn't mention on here, because it wasn't a change, but the $3 million a year for the street improvement program, this is basically the, the residential streets that everybody sees. Casey mentioned the pavement condition index and Justin and I had talked about this last week and he said $3 million a year is just the minimum to try and keep the pavement condition index steady over time, rather than, than dropping. And so there's really sort of a, a two-pronged approach with business districts, street improvements and residential street improvements. And those are the ones that you hear, you all hear about the most is, my street is crumbling, what are you going to do about it? And so we do think it's important to keep some level of borrowing in there. 3 million was just that minimum level to kind of keep a constant pavement condition index. So I'm happy to answer any questions or if you'd like Justin or Jeff to come up and answer any questions. What we'd be looking for is, you know, I'm not asking you tonight to fit 10, $10 million worth of projects into a $6.8 million budget, but asking just for direction. If that's the route you want to go, then we can do a lot of work ahead of the next meeting on July 12th and try on July 12th to get to a, a schedule that everybody's comfortable with to start our processes for borrowing for fiscal year '22. If that's, if you would like to consider amending the debt policy, that would be something that we would bring forward to figure out what that is and do a little bit more homework and show you what does 65% look like, what does 70% look like, as well as give you some information about what do other cities in Iowa do. So I'd kind of leave it out there for your discussion and your direction as to where you would like to go.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Can I get a, a couple answers tonight though, on a couple of things?
Yeah.
The first one is, where does the American Rescue Plan come in to touch any of these?
So, so one of the things we did talk about is how the American Rescue Plan can fund water and sewer and then the pavement on top to repair replacements of those. And so the State Street project has 4.56 million dollars worth of eligible costs for American Rescue Plan dollars, but we only have 3.7 million total. And so initially in that presentation, I had done about $2 million as a set aside, which is not a, a definite number, but I did reflect that on here as something that we had previously talked about. You could easily put all 3.7 million dollars there and there's probably some other, there'd certainly be some other things that we wouldn't be able to fund. The presentation discussion of the American Rescue Plan is going to come up in July because we'll be able to calculate our final revenue loss based on June numbers, so.
So just clarify, so 3.7 million does go into, can offset the $3.7 million deficit?
Um, so 2 million is already there. So you really have 1.7 million that you could take off that Downtown Implementation Plan to get it down to 2 million.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question is, only one of us was on the council when you guys capped the 60%?
That's true.
Would that person be able to answer where that came from?
Well, that exceptional city council at that time in 1997 decided to cap at 60% because we were coming out of our economic woes. And what we were trying to do is cap it to show responsibility and to raise our bond rating. Now, if the council would decide to go with 65%, something like that, I questioned Jessica on this, it could affect our bond rating. So in other words, we're going to end up paying more to try and borrow more, which means then you'll have to borrow less. So it's kind of a catch-22. I don't remember exactly why we went with the 60%. I know that it's helped our bond rating immensely in getting it up because we, we needed some stability. And that's what we decided to go, you know?
And for those in the audience who don't understand the history, you're talking about the Iowa Trust scandal, coming out of that?
That was previous, we were, we were beginning to come out of it. And, you know, as we were crawling forward and being able to buy police cars and, you know, things that we had needed for a very long time, it would have been easy to just to jump and borrow a whole bunch. And we decided that, you know, for the bond rating and everything else, which impacts everybody down the road, that we would be better off having a, a policy on, on what, what you can go to. So it's a policy. It, it isn't a law, it's, it's a policy set by the city council.
And then Jessica, can you and Diana run some numbers for us to see negative and positive impacts, if there are any?
Yeah, we can definitely do that. And I, I am just inferring from the way the policy is written is that there, there was an double A rating until the Iowa Trust scandal. It then dropped to an A rating and I think we've been at a double A?
We're double A two right now.
Double A two.
Yeah, for, for a number of years. And so, so yeah, so this was about, you know, setting a policy in place to protect our, our rating. And Councilmember Lottie Hoff is correct. If you look at any of our past Moody's Ratings reports, one of the things that they're always looking at is what is your debt load compared to your, your evaluation that you have to pay it. And so, but this is one of those things, it's, it's from 1997. It is our own policy and it can be amended. It is our own policy and it can be amended. Certainly that doesn't mean that it should be everything's available and I don't think that is what Diana would agree with either or our financial advisors, but there could be room to grow if that is something you're willing to consider.
And then I, I just saw a way to take 4.2 million dollars off of your, your spreadsheet, if you can go back to that. They said it only cost 800,000 to tear down Center Street Viaduct and just do away with it. So that saves us 5 million right there. I'm sure we get no pushback from anybody living or visiting our city if the Center Street Viaduct was gone. Because we have three other good viadocks, you know, so.
I'd like to point out that's Councilman Thompson's idea, not mine.
I'm just looking at saving money. Thank you.
So, so if you'd like us for the July 12th meeting and probably even in advance, we'll get you some different scenarios at 65, 70 and 75% to show you what that looks like. For now, unless there's anything that anybody wants to strike off this list or change off this list right now.
What's our deadline for this?
Well, we don't really have a deadline. It's when we communicate to our financial advisors. I think we certainly try to close by December 1st of each year so that we avoid that December 1st interest payment that would typically be due. So it, working backwards, I think we're typically in the August timeframe for public hearings and things.
Well, the, the reason I'm asking is, is this something you want to have in a public work session versus during a council meeting? Because there's a lot to discuss here, a lot of decisions that need to come out of this because you're talking about change, possibly changing the 60%. And I think there's going to be some people thinking that way. And plus, there's, we need to go through this line item by line item. And I don't know if, if the proper place is to do that in a council meeting.
Yeah, I, I will leave that up to you. I mean, we, we have, July 12th is our next meeting. The idea was that this would come forward again for discussion on the July 12th meeting, looking for some more decision-making to be had there. You know, obviously, if you were to change the, the 60%, that's going to require a resolution to amend the debt policy. But at least if on July 12th, we as staff have enough direction to be able to move forward with communication with our financial advisors and bond council, I think that would be okay with us. It's probably a matter of whether or not you think you can accomplish that conversation in a, a regular council meeting versus a special session.
Jessica, can you get the temperature from our, the bond rating of what? Or is it basically we change it to 65% and then they?
Moody's never gives like concrete answers on things.
Right.
I mean, I don't, we've asked them questions before about things. I think probably what would be more concerning to them is our 0.5% valuation growth at this point than probably changing the 60%. Maggie, our financial advisor, did share with us on a call Thursday or Friday that we are unique in cities that 60% is, is fairly low compared to what a lot of other cities do. And we can, what we can do is we can look at what are those cities' bond ratings and what are those percentages as well to see. But I think it's, you know, multiple factors that come into play on things.
Well, and we are in a very different situation than we were when we put that 60% in.
Correct. It's, it's a policy that's been out there for quite some time and it never hurts to review our policies.
But also, we can change that 5%, though. We could put an end to all the tax abatements. Now that we have the residential $10,000 cash, we can, any future growth, we can start collecting those taxes immediately, commercial and resident. Well, if they take the 10,000, we're going to get residential. If we truly believe people want to live here, the, the tax abatement's a non-issue is what we're thinking with the 10,000. And if people start moving here and buying new houses and constructing, then businesses will follow and not need tax abatements.
Yeah.
That would, that directly affects that 5% growth.
Uh, you, you are correct that I think, you know, ultimately as we near the end of building 100 new homes, that's the time for the council to have a conversation about what's necessary. It is left as optional. The way the chamber has put it is that you can't get both, but you might have a home where you do your calculations and figure out tax abatement's going to be the better thing. It's, it's all about cash up front or cash on the back end and, yeah, so. But I, I do think, you know, we could be having a conversation in the next three to five years about whether or not tax abatement is, is part of our strategy moving forward.
Well, we all know that the problem with Marshawn is we don't generate enough tax revenue to support what we need for a town of 27,000. We've either got to grow the town to 30,000 or 32,000 or figure out how to streamline some of the things we do. Or both. All right, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Sure. Any other comments or questions? Would anybody want to direct staff for the next meeting what to do?
I, I feel comfortable just, we can bring back some different scenarios related to the debt policy and changes there and bring back some information. I don't see that much will change on the project workbook. I will email out the capital improvement plan that was approved in March and note when, what page that trail project was on. So, so I feel comfortable with direction.
Very good. Thank you. Ready for the next item, then, the splash pad at Farmer's Market?
Yes, Your Honor, I asked for this to be put on the agenda. But before I start, I'd like to make, point out something. I put out a letter that was put, put out to all the council people and on the agenda and part of it is incorrect. It says that the Farmer's Market has received a $100,000 grant from the Martha Tell, Martha Ellen Ty Foundation. And that is not correct. They are going to be in the future possibly applying for that, but until an entire plan is put together, they have not received that. That's my fault. I take ownership of that. We have Tricia Wilder here. She's from the Farmer's Market. She has, we got to talking about urban splash pads. And urban splash pads are, they're not in a park setting, but they're also multi-use. And multi-use could be, they, they could be an uptown water feature with lights. They're still used as a splash pad. They can also, there is a combination splash pad ice skating rink. But, and talking with Jeff, he's pointed out that these are relatively new and he would want to see if it would even be cost-effective to do so. We might have better options. The reason why I'm bringing it up now and Gary Thompson has also helped is that there appears, there appears to be quite a bit of funding available for this type of combination with the Farmer's Market. And the Farmer's Market is looking at totally redoing their market also, where we could develop the entire corner, add the splash pad in, working together. So Gary, do you have something to add?
Yeah, if I can, I would just say, this whole thing came about, I mean, Mike was looking at something on Main Street and I kind of pushed him off that because I didn't want, you know, I want, I want not residential, but I want, I want retail on Main Street. And that's when I told him about, you know, the Farmer's Market doing some things. And, and the biggest thing that he and I both bought into on this is we're going to take a facility, if we can do this, that is utilized two days a week from May till October. And that's it. And theoretically, we can take a half or a quarter block, that whole quarter block, and turn it into something that could literally be utilized 365 days a year. This could be an event center, you know, it doesn't, you know, you shut the water off, you got a stage, you know? I mean, this is something, you're going to have two canopies that it's shaded for grandpa and grandma to sit in and, and watch the kids. And it just turned into something. And then talking to Julie Hitchens, coming out of COVID, there's a ton of grants out there for mental health-type recovery for these kids and families. And plus the healthy eating that kind of grew out of the, the COVID stay-at-home thing. The, the time's right. It's, the, the, the money's out there, the collaboration between what Mike's put together with the different organizations. This is something we, we already own three-fourths of the land. You know, we would just have to secure that 5,000 square feet.
What, what we're basically asking tonight is, we're not asking for any funding. As we just saw our bonding, we're, we're going to have some tough decisions to make the way it is. And with other monies being available right now, there might not be money available for this type of combination in a couple of years. So the only thing that we're asking for is to be able to direct our staff, Jeff Hubbard, to work with the Farmer's Market people and see if they can come up together with a combination that works for everybody. And I, I think it's a worthy project to do. Jeff doesn't need to bring it back in a couple of weeks, he can bring it back this fall as we look at different revenue, or different ideas.
And I just, before Tricia talks about the Farmer's Market changes, I just want to elaborate. I did speak to Heidi Delal at Martha Ellen Ty. And Mike and I, more me than Mike, we, we got, I got your grant application squished, squashed because we muddied the waters. We took your original plan and said, well, let's do this, you know, let's add this feature. And so that's, and I've already had this conversation for the record with, with Tricia that she has to resubmit just looking at the Farmer's Market part of it. But the neat thing is if we secure the land down there, that little parcel, now you have a blank slate. I mean, this can be anything. And so I guess with that, I'll take the blame for delaying this. Nothing's going to happen this year anyway, but, but.
You know, it, it has several, it, it, when you first look at it, it seems odd, but then you start realizing it's right next to the Benford House. You got the Suzie Sauer House right there. You've got the one-room schoolhouse there. It makes for a perfect one-day field trip for a family. It really does. Plus, you have an attraction for downtown, plus a water feature for downtown. And part of the city council in the planning that I wasn't involved in, but bathrooms downtown. We could have that also if we can all get it put together. But what we need to do is.
The bike trail, well, now if we implement that, the bike traffic is going to be on State Street.
Yeah, well, we, the plan we just looked at, the bike path is going to come right by it. So, would you like to say something?
Sure.
We'll talk about what your plans are for the Farmer's Market.
You've been so patient. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm the manager. This will be my third year managing the Farmer's Market. We are a 501(c)(3) now. And we were hoping to develop our, the current property we sit on by adding a bathroom building with storage in it and another open-air shelter that runs north and south on our lot. And then we would also, we were hoping to purchase the land in front of us that's for sale and turn it into, add like a pocket park, a pollinator garden, hopefully some small shade trees sitting, possibly a gazebo if we can fit it in there so it can act like a secondary stage. We do have a live band that comes to play most of the time. So we were hoping in the corner of the two shelters, we could have a staging area for the band as well. Then there could also be other events hosted during market or on other days. People could apply with the city to use it just like any other park area and turn it into something that's more of a destination, not just to come buy vegetables and fruits and stuff, but to spend a nice time with your family, you know, like a park, host events. We work with any other community group. If they want to come up, we're going to be having, well, we've already had the Animal Rescue League come up and do a fundraiser. We have ISU come up quite often as well. They'll do things with the Master Gardeners and the 4-H Club. And we're open to welcoming any other kind of community, anything up there as well.
So you're all for this?
Yeah. And also, I really like the idea of the splash pad. I had not thought about something like that. But of course, in that downtown area, there's a lot of residential people within the area. There's the new building that's going up as well. And something that could be converted into the ice rink as well, sounds really neat. I'm also on the holiday stroll board, so that would be something fun for us to have during the holiday stroll.
So I, I guess at this time, what I'm going to ask is, I would make a motion that the city council direct Jeff Hubbard to work with the downtown Farmer's Market and to develop a plan if possible to bring a splash pad in together with the Farmer's Market and bring it back to city council possibly this fall.
And I'll just say, this is probably from just some rough estimates, this whole thing is probably 650 to 750,000 dollar project. However, it sounds like our impact is going to be minimal, minimal. Probably what we even have budgeted out there, you know, that Jessica placed on future budgets. And Splash for Life is donating money. Farmer's Market obviously is getting grants, will be the major grant writer or recipient for this stuff. But there's, it sounds like, like what we said, coming out of COVID, there's companies looking to hand over money for this stuff. So it just fits right now, the timing's right. So I would second Mike's motion.
I was just going to suggest that was a second.
Yes.
Any further discussion by the council?
One, one item just from a staff perspective is Jeff is a master of many things, but he is not a splash pad designer.
Right.
And so I, I would hope that if he needs to incur some costs for hiring somebody to provide that technical expertise to it, that you would be considering reimbursing that cost with local option sales tax as I don't think there will be capacity for that in the general fund.
What I, what I can say from the research that I've done already, these companies will provide a, a ton of information if given some guidance to get to hopefully win the account. Now, dealing with, you know, a public entity like us, obviously it changes because it goes out for a bid process.
Correct. And that's where there's some Chapter 26 concerns. I think we'd have to work with the Farmer's Market to figure out what are scopes of work that are completely separate and 100% donation funded in order to comply with Iowa code. But I do think that, no offense to Jeff, but I, I do think that there's a technical expertise there that, you know, given the site constraints and.
And then I also want to say that we would probably be in a better position, the, meaning the city entity, to negotiate the purchase of that land versus the Farmer's Market, that little island that sits there. Plus, we have the brownfield money. If we buy it, you know, right outright, the, there was a gas station for years. It probably needs to be cleaned up. So we would be looking at utilizing a little bit of that brownfield, 300,000 for that site. I don't know if you penciled that in at all, Jessica?
No. We, we're, we're not penciling in any digging up of things here in our, in our debt capacity. But Michelle can speak to more about the requirements for the.
Yeah, Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. I just want to be clear, brownfield grant that we received does not cover cleanup.
Oh.
So that is purely for an assessment purposes. And typically with, in order to utilize that, there are restrictions as to when the acquisition occurs and our assessments. So I just want to be very clear that that funding is not for cleanup.
We'll just put 12 inches of concrete over it, then. We'll cap it.
And I, I would have no problem if Jeff, if Jeff needs some tech, you know, needs to hire somebody with technical advice that we can't, that we can't get, that it come out of local auction sales tax. We're not talking a large amount here.
Other council discussion, else let's open it up to the unmuted microphones and phones.
I was going to say, Your Honor, there's actually no one left on the go-to meeting besides my computer in the city council chamber.
It was getting pretty thin, I noticed. Sure.
Hi, I'm Lee Bottor, 401 Orchard Drive. I am the head of Splash for Life. And I just want to say thank you for the consideration. And Mike and Gary have really went to town on looking at this. As a group, we 100% support any efforts for a splash pad because we do know it would be economic, it'd be huge economic growth for Marshalltown. And just seeing, when I saw the master plan with Bolton and Mink, I'm like excited. I wanted to jump up and down and I thought, stay in your seat because the bikes would be going by there. Jeff does have a lot of expertise. And Vortex, when we started the project years ago, we worked a lot with Vortex and they do provide a lot of information, as do other vendors for that. So I would capitalize on the freebies of those. And again, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mike. Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Trish, wherever you are. Okay, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't thank us until you see water come out of the ground. Well, wait, on purpose, not like our old water mains on State and Main.
That's right.
Okay.
You need a vote to direct you?
Let's go ahead. Yeah, I think we've had enough discussion. Motion second. Let's go ahead. Yeah, I think we've had enough discussion. Motion second. Let's call the roll.
Weirin?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good. Staff has its direction. On to the fifth of six items, and that's the Mega Ten Caboose request to rename, or request to name it.
Thank you for making me not talk there. I'm having a little bit of a coughing fit as of late today. The mayor received an email from Cindy Soderberg, the daughter of Stan Brown, back in March to name the caboose after him and highlighted an article in there about the efforts that he put to bring that there. And of course, she wanted it done, I think, the next week because that was when her mom's birthday was, and there just wasn't the timing to make that happen. But in doing some research over the last couple of months, I did find that we actually did have a naming policy that was created kind of for this purpose. So, I've shared that with you in, in the email or in the agenda. But basically, what I've done so far to date is done some research, talked to some UP people, some Mega Ten Park Board people, Terry Gray, the park director who was around during that time, kind of figure out, you know, truly, is, is it deserving of, of that? And everybody that I've talked to has said yes. I took it to our park board meeting in June, and one of the things that they were concerned about was there are a whole lot of other people, UP workers, that brought it here. They, they've come and they've painted it and touched it up over the years. And so, they wanted to see something more along. They also thought it'd be nice to let people know what the, what a caboose is. You know, kids growing up in town have no idea the trains are different than they were when they first started here, when the town got developed. So, some history of the railroad, how it kind of, it got involved in Marshalltown, what the caboose actually was used for, kind of give a history of that, and, and some shout-outs to the UP people for, for doing all that work. And then also then naming, naming the caboose after Stan Brown. So, when talking with them, I actually talked to Terry Gray, who's also on the Mega Ten Board. And she said that before their group disbanded, that was what they were looking at doing, was coming up with some sort of signage or placard that would have that information on it. So, she thought that would be a good thing to continue on, but then adding, adding that Stan Brown memorial would be fine, or the naming of it. So, I guess with your direction, I would like to kind of work on what that design, what that sign would look like, get some costs associated with it. I do know that when the Mega Ten Board disbanded, they gave some money to us for improvements for Mega Ten Parks. We do have $19,000 in the fund to be directed there that we could pay for the sign out of that fund.
Comments or questions for Jeff?
I didn't cough at all. Should be talking more.
Full disclosure, I was the president of Mega Ten when it did disband with the permission of three of the people still as officers on that board that were the originators of it way back when, including Mike Schlesinger and Mike Blum. Jim Clark was also involved in it way back when. And it was able to successfully raise a lot of money over the years. And it's a very, very popular park right now. So, I just kind of wanted to throw that out there.
We do need a resolution to come to the next meeting to formalize the naming.
Okay. I entertain a motion to that effect.
I would move that we take that direction, Your Honor.
Okay.
Second.
Very good. Any further discussion?
Do you have a motion on the floor, Your Honor?
I'm sorry? Yeah.
Motion on the floor.
There is a motion. Oh, was there? Did I miss it?
Yes. I believe so.
What, what motion did I miss?
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
My error. Proceed.
Okay. Nobody else is online to be unmuted. Anybody wish to speak on this issue or forever hold your peace? Let's vote.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Very good. Staff has direction there too. On to the last item of discussion, which is fire insurance fee.
Dave Ryerson, Marshalltown Fire Department. So, you approved the fee schedule tonight by resolution. But I asked that this specific topic be pulled from that resolution. And I don't, I don't believe at the last council meeting, when we brought this up for discussion, that we really talked about this to the extent that we should have. And I did not feel comfortable leaving that, leaving that in there. It is very controversial. There's arguments that can be made that the city's double billing people for fire services because our services paid for through property tax, and then turn around and then bill them for a service that many feel are paid for through their property taxes. There are states now that are banning this, this practice. Kansas is one. There's two other states, and you'll have to excuse me, I can't remember the other two. And insurance companies are fighting back against this type of revenue generation for fire departments. You know, then, then you, then you have the discussion, well, what's the fair rate to charge? Because some insurance companies pay $500, some pay $2,500. What do you do if somebody doesn't have homeowner's insurance and you bill them and they don't pay? What do you do? Are we penalizing people for being good, good residents of the community and having property taxes? I just, I just feel after I started doing the research on this topic, that there's a lot more discussion that needs to be had before we consider doing something like this. And I would just assume us do that, then pass it, and then have a lot of backfire and a lot of dissent in the community for having passed it. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any?
Your Honor, I guess I have a question. But are insurance companies pushing back? Like if, well, you, one of the fees we did was like the multiple false alarm calls.
Well, the state allows us to bill for certain things. Haz, the hazmat response fee is a, is a specific type of thing. And we, and we, we bill by, or by city ordinance if they, if we have, if we run too many false alarm calls. The insurance companies are pushing back, and they're saying that because they pay for property, they pay for this service in their property tax, that we are overbilling or overcharging. And they are, the insurance companies are the, are suffering that, and they're having to pass those costs on along to their, to their insureds.
But just on this?
Just on that.
But don't, don't these, like when the college is the one I remember that you, before you came, they were out there every week with false alarms. Wasn't their insurance paying for that?
I, I don't know who was paying for that. Typically, if it was like, if it was you as the homeowner, no, we would be billing you as an individual.
So, what's the state's position on this?
The, the state is, the state of Iowa is one of those states that still subscribes to the philosophy that you're paid, the service is paid for by property taxes, so that we shouldn't, we shouldn't in theory be billing them for it.
Okay. Before we do anything, should we ask legal counsel on this?
I was, I was going to say, so it is an allowable fee to charge. And I think, you know, I understand Chief Ryerson's concerns. We do have a cash management policy, or I think we, do we have an accounts receivable policy as well? Okay. So, accounts receivable is in cash management. There would be ways that you could implement this and provide sort of outs for those who didn't have insurance coverage for it. So, if somebody didn't have insurance, they could sign an affidavit saying that they did not have insurance, and therefore we would waive the fee. You could request that an insurance company provide a letter for their insured saying that they do not have this coverage as part of their policy, and then you waive the fee. I looked at my homeowner's policy, and I have $1,000 worth of coverage for this very fee in my policy. Many, many people do have this. Many companies do offer it. And so, it's a revenue that's out there that I think we can create our policy. And it's not one that we would use very often. We have how many fires a year approximately?
Well, live string, we had had 167, but that includes like car fires and dumpster fires and stuff. If you're looking just strictly at structures, I believe we were 60.
Yeah. So, this is not a, a huge number of, of potential accounts receivable issues where you couldn't have, or where you couldn't have a policy that you could implement to, to really govern those. So, I think there is a way within our cash management policy that you could implement this, but provide those guardrails so that it wasn't as though we were chasing down individuals who had experienced a horrible tragedy, but then we were trying to collect from them when they had no means to pay it as well.
But is it worth our time to chase down 60 fees in a year?
I feel like any revenue that we can try to collect at this point, I mean, in, in looking forward, we need to continue to work to enhance our revenue. And so, so, yes, I mean, just to at least try and see what it looks like. We don't know how many people are uninsured or whose insurance company would provide them that letter stating that they didn't have that coverage.
Did you hear that, Chief Tupper? No more driving by cars that are parked on the wrong side of the street.
Yes, sir.
I, I have a problem with this. I think, I think if we need to fund our fire department, we ought to, through property taxes. And we ought to set the property tax with a properly funded fire department. Instead of going through these hoops and twist and having staff cha, chase this down, and well, we can waive this person because they didn't have insurance. Well, you know what? They did pay their property taxes, you know? And I, and I'm imagining that some of the differences in the homeowner's insurance is whether you got a Cadillac plan or whether you got, now, I'm paying for a Cadillac plan because I hardly want any deductible, so I end up with the $2,500 bucks and I have a house fire. Well, you know, I, I guess myself, it, to me, it would be more honest if we just did it with property taxes. It affects everybody, and it would, and if we need to do that to fund the fire department, then let's do that.
So, the, the difficult piece of that is we're, we're capped. And so, we're basically saying that there's a number of departments that we can't fully fund with the $8 and 10 cent property tax levy. And that's why we're looking at other revenue options is because property taxes alone just aren't going to cut it now and into the future.
So, what we're saying is if there's 60 fires, and they all have insurance, all of them, and their policy is $2,500, that's $150,000. So, we're going to implement a policy to find $150,000 yearly.
And, but that's if they have $2,500.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying, best case scenario-
More realistic is 500.
Yeah. Best case scenario is, this, I agree with Mike. This is insane. Because you're talking anywhere from $30,000 to $150,000. I, I'm against. Let's, if, come back with a bigger number.
Well, this is the discussion I'd hoped that we'd had last time because, because we really need to, we really needed to have it.
Yeah. And so, what I would say, Councilmember Thompson, is it's really hard to come up with any revenue source that's even going to be $30,000. $30,000 is probably more, more revenue than you currently bring into the fire department each year or on par.
Well, with, with the exception of the contract that we carry with the veterans home.
Yeah. So, you're talking about, you know, one fee that could potentially, you know, I say potentially, double the revenue that the fire department currently makes. I don't know that there's any other fees out there that the fire department could consider that would do that, or that other departments could consider that would be able to do that as well. And so-
But I, earlier I said, let's eliminate tax abatement. That funds every department.
Yeah. And you can, you can do that, but it's, again, it's something that you have to question of what you're going to get for the, the development. So, we're still in that growth phase. We're not to the point where we have fully grown out like the way you see Bondurant. Bondurant has just recently rescinded their tax abatement. They're in a very different growth position than we are as a community.
What's the worst-case scenario? If we tried it for a year to see what the pushback is from insurance companies and other people?
I, I, somebody, somebody sues us for double billing. An insurance company sues us or tries to, you know, not, not pay the bill. I'm sure there'd be some type of legal action, would be my guess, as I read through and see what other, other states and other communities are doing.
And I, I would say that would be minimized if an insurance company's, if we have the policy that says, and if an insurance company is willing to provide a letter to their insured that says that they do not provide that fee, then I'm saying we would, we would write off the account, just as if nobody had insurance and they were willing to file an affidavit or sign an affidavit that legal counsel draw up. We would write off that account, and it would no longer be something we would attempt to collect. So, the idea is you're only collecting from those insurance companies that actually have the fee that is set out in policies.
So, again, what Mike said, we're going to go after, we're going to punish the people that are doing the right thing.
I guess I don't look at it as punishing the people if their policy has created a fee, and they've purchased a policy that has this fee that's available should something happen.
Okay. That's it enough.
You know, this, this, this procedure, this type of cost recoveries is more common in where you have volunteer fire departments as, as a way to fund. And then volunteer fire departments have subscription services where that's how they pay for their equipment. So, this, this is something that is coming out now that municipal fire departments and fire districts are looking at as a way to generate revenue and do cost, cost recovery.
Well, I'm just going to say one more thing here. When I found out Unity Point was not reimbursing us or paying us for the ambulances going out, in one of our meetings, I, I went to talk to you, and you were out that day. So, Chris, you know, the assistant chief and I talked. And he, he was very persuasive that going out with those ambulance calls was a great service to the taxpayers of Marshalltown, and we shouldn't look at reimbursement from the hospital. Because those people expected us, our fire department, our EMTs, to provide a service to this, the community of Marshalltown. And until the equipment was getting overused and the people were getting burned out, he thought you would agree with him. And I see this, you know, until, and, until we are down to our last dime, and we have to chase $150,000, I don't think this is the place to chase the $150,000. Because I think it's more hassle than it's worth. So, again, you know, I look at, like what Councilman Lottie Hoff said, and like what you said, Chief, is taxpayers to have an expectation. We provide safety. We provide the police. We provide the fire. So, you know, and if, if we're looking for reimbursement in anything, then we should stop going with Unity Point then. And I just, and according to your assistant chief, that's not a good PR move.
Yeah, not responding EMS calls. I, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Because if, if you're injured at your house, there are times that we're on scene with a patient for 15 or 20 minutes before an ambulance gets there. And I, I don't think you, I don't think you care what color the unit is that shows up at your house. You just want somebody there to help you. So, I think, I think it's, that's not a good move to not, to not run at all. Do I think there should-
Throwing it out there is, is, you know, part of the reinforcement for the argument that there are things we do that we don't expect reimbursement for.
Yeah.
The fire department, should the fire department be a revenue generating source?
Well, I can tell you, if you're talking about like $75,000 revenue compared to a million-dollar budget, I mean, you're, we're, we're never going to be a revenue generating force in the fire department. Even if you took on EMS yourself, it's not going to be a revenue generating force.
But I'm sure Dave would give up 30, the low end of that was 30,000. I'm sure Dave would give up 30,000 of his salary to give you $30,000 a year.
Hey, I offered to give up part of my salary for a fire marshal, so.
Yeah. Remember. I would move that we not pursue this at this time, not implement this program.
Okay. Anybody need further discussion? Roll call.
Martin?
Uh, yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
No.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Okay. Staff has its direction, and that takes-
Thank you.
That takes us to the time of public comment, and I have to read this quickly. Members of public may make comments on the AM that was not on the agenda during this time. The speaker must approach the microphone, state the name and address. Limit comments to three minutes unless I authorize longer. Speak direct, shall direct comments to the mayor and council as a whole. And we, as mayor and councilors, shall not engage in discussion or debate on those items in order not to violate the open meetings laws. Microphone is open. I would tell you to unmute the mics. Nobody's here. I don't see anybody doing a 100-yard dash to the microphone, so I declare that we are adjourned at the time- are adjourned at the time of 7:59 PM. Thanks for coming.
Hey. I'll be there to talk. By one minute.